Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's episode of the Bryan County Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustment. We have called a meeting to order. Our first order of business will be a approval of the minutes for our meeting in February. Does everybody have a chance to review the minutes and see any opportunity for correction?
Make a motion we approve.
Okay. All right. Have a motion in second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. So we'll open the Board of Adjustment with a public hearing for variance project two zero two three zero zero eight four Joshua Burke. They have a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So this is a variance request for a property located at one seven four Belle Island Road, highlighted on the map there. The applicant was requesting a side and rear setback variance to reduce both to five feet in order to place an accessory building, a shed. They do have an existing single-family home on the property. The applicant did provide an updated site plan after the package was published. And staff did take a look at that and did note, as you can see with these red squares here, there still appears to be room to fit within the setbacks there. In terms of the variance criteria, the applicant indicated they're requesting this due to the existing septic system, which is shown on the site plan, and the large front setback of the home. The neighborhood does require fifty-foot front setbacks, which are larger than the thirty feet normally required in R-15 zoning. However, staff did determine that these setbacks can be met, though the location of the building may have to be adjusted. Staff also determined that this variance is not consistent with the UDO, as the accessory building can be accommodated within these required setbacks, and staff did not identify a hardship on the property. So staff is recommending denial of the variance, and I can answer any questions you have.
I have a couple of questions. What was the difference in the new site plan and the old site plan?
I think they were just showed a little bit more detail with the septic system, and we're trying to show the difficulty fitting it with that septic system.
Okay. And what is the twenty-foot existing tree buffer? Is that a county?
It's not. It's something that is shown on the plat. It's, I believe it is a requirement of the neighborhood. So if that's something that they're affecting, it would likely be an HOA if they have one that would have to do that, but it's not a requirement from us.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
All right. Mr. Burke, are you in the audience? Would you like to come up and speak?
Yes, sir.
If you would state your name and address for the recording.
James Joshua Burke. I address one seven four Belle Island Court, Richmond Hill, Georgia. So to answer or further answer your question about the difference, the original site plan was to scale from the builder, but the, I don't know if you can, you guys go back to the original.
Yeah, see if the clicker there, you can use the arrows to know where.
Okay. So the thinner, the thin red rectangles you see were my original layouts, not to scale. The drawing itself is to scale from the builder. The burgundy rectangle was added by, I believe, the zoning department. So that, that rectangle is also not to scale. So the updated one shows the actual placement of the septic lines based off of the health department's drawing, which, is that in here as well?
The health department drawing is not in there. It's in the packages.
Okay. So in the health department drawing, it is not to scale, definitely not to scale. It doesn't show it coming past the house on the south end. So this is an accurate representation of the measurements they have to scale in a CAD drawing to show you that the septic lines come that far over on the property. The, so as far as the orientation goes of the two adjustments they made to my drawing, this would not, those would also not be, they would not match the rest of the neighborhood, in other words. The only houses that have side buildings like that are ones that are turned in odd direction to the road. They're, you know, instead of being perpendicular to the road, they maybe turn ninety degrees. So that being said, she mentioned the larger front setback of fifty feet, which is part of the reason why the house was, you know, the backyard smaller, obviously, because the house had to be further off the paved road. And so, you know, in order for the house or the accessory building to be behind the property, that was the reason for the proposed reduction in variance, or, you know, variance in setback. I would like for it to be behind the house. I think it would look better. I think it would match the neighborhood. The intention was to have the building painted the, as close to the color of the house as possible, so that, you know, it matches the hardy board on the home. And, what else was there? Oh, also, so the south end of the property, there is a easement for the other properties behind mine. And so the, the side setback, there's not an actual house next to me. There's not a neighbor right next to me that, in this house, you know, that the building would be right against on the property line. Also, I spoke with my neighbors behind me prior to this meeting, and, you know, I thought we were all on the same page. I just, you know, voiced exactly what I wanted to do. And I thought we were, we were all okay with it, and they knew exactly what I was doing when I proceeded with the variance. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Do you have an HOA?
We have a voluntary HOA.
And they're fine with it? Do you have to submit it?
I'm not part of the HOA.
Voluntary HOA?
Yeah, that's a, one of the only neighborhoods in Richmond Hill that has a voluntary HOA.
What does that mean?
So either you can join it, or you don't have to. The only benefit you get to joining is you can use the community dock, the playground, the clubhouse, that kind of thing. There's no, um...
So they don't require you to submit any paperwork for changes to your property that don't align? Okay.
No. That was one of the reasons why we bought the house out there. We were in a smaller neighborhood before where you couldn't even park a boat in the driveway, so we wanted to, wanted a little more space.
Usually if somebody wants to move a building like this, it's because there's a big, pretty tree in the way. Is there, is there any tree that would be impacted if we, if you had your building in A instead of B?
So actually, yes. In the case of the way these were moved on the forward end of the septic and turned perpendicular to the south end of the house, there is an oak tree right there that would have to come down. The side of my property, I have already cleared where the building was expected to be, and that began before I knew about the, or before I knew about the setbacks. We had already started cutting trees.
Gotcha.
You know, once I learned of that, you know, we were, we were already cutting them down, so.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Burke?
I just want to ask, when you say that you talked to your neighbors before and they were clear about what was happening, it kind of sounds like maybe they're not on board anymore? Is that what you're kind of getting at?
It is.
Okay.
There were, there were a few Facebook posts about it, on the neighborhood Facebook page, that, or a few neighbors voiced their concern on there. And, you know, like I said, I thought we were all, we were all on the same page before, before I even submitted the paperwork.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. I have three speaker slips for this issue. I'm just calling them up in the order I have them here. The first one is Tracy Wilkerson, one forty Belle Island Lane.
I'm his wife, Heather.
Oh, we do. Okay, I have two slips. So y'all want to come up together?
Hi, my name is Heather Wilkerson. I reside at one forty Belle Island Lane in Richmond Hill.
And I'm Tracy Wilkerson, one forty Belle Island Lane.
Okay.
Our property abuts Mr. Burke's property.
To the rear.
To the, to the backside. So we will be the one most subjected to this building being built. When he started the process, and we have no issue with Mr. Burke or his family, I do want to make that clear. You know, when he started clearing the land, you know, conversation was like, oh, what are you doing? And he said, I'm gonna, I'd like to buy, build a building to put my boat and some other stuff in. And it was like, okay, I mean, it's his property. We didn't realize what the setbacks were going to be. During that process of clearing, there were other conversations, some, and at one point, I did, he's mentioned something about a variance, and I said, oh, and he said, it's five feet. Well, I've never gone through this process. I don't know what all this is. And so that was it. When we received the letter to understand then he was requesting five feet from the back as well as the side, that's when some of our concerns started to, to come to light. Basically, we, our property, we have six acres back there. We bought in two thousand and nine, and, and it's, that's, that's our piece. That's our haven back there. It's very natural, that whole property area, sadly to say, that was bought by a developer a few years back, and they cut it all down and et cetera. But the houses have left a buffer to some degree, and, and so it still remains peaceful. The very end property, to get into Belle Island Lane, which there are five houses on that, most of us are here, that is a, it's an easement.
Easement right away.
That, that butts up next to his property. So there is not a house, but it's our entryway into our, our road. And it's always been preserved within, just nature. This just always had plants, the trees, what have you. During this process of clearing, some of that area has been, you know, disturbed, but that's here and there. It will come back. But, so when you pull into our property, you are now going to see the building, as well as then you pull into my driveway, which is the very first driveway to the right behind him, and I'm going to have this large building that's now visible. If it was brought in and over within the setbacks, you know, if he chose to, he could have some greenery or whatever back there that maybe helped to limit this big stark building that we're going to be looking at. And I guess I feel, as far as a hardship, when you're purchasing a property and you're hoping that you're home for a few years or what have you, you're looking at things that you're wanting to do in the future. He owned a boat when he bought the property, so he would be aware that that would have to be stored somewhere. And it was stored in his driveway up until this point. But that property is small. It's point five five acres. It's a very odd-shaped property. And so with the setbacks that are required, he does have a place that this building can go in, based on the suggestions here. And so I just feel, we all have limitations on our properties, and we have to work within that. Maybe if there had been more discussion, it was very casual, none of the other neighbors on the street, our street, of the five of us besides myself, that I'm aware of, were spoken to with them. So, you know, maybe some of this had, could have been prevented had a little neighborhood meeting come together, but it wasn't. And by that point, the damage was done, the lot was cleared, and then the variance was requested. So, I mean, we're, we're asking for it to be denied, just based on the fact that there is a way for that building to go up within the setbacks that exist.
Okay. Yeah, that's pretty much, you know, we have, we have no problem putting, having, having him put up the building. That's not an issue. It's just we would like it not to be.
Right, in our front lot, side and front yard. I mean, our house points out, my front porch sits there. I'm a porch sitter, and that's what I'm going to see.
Gotcha. All right.
Any questions for us?
Any questions? All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Third card is Mr. Aaron Young, fifty-five Belle Island Way.
Evening. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. Aaron Young, five-five Belle Island Way. I understand, I'm going to speak for denial. I understand that staff's already made recommendations for denial. They're stating a couple of things, or that's what it appears, that there are no hardships, and I agree with that. This property was purchased a couple of years ago, brand-new house. All of this was known going into this. This would, as you all know, with other variances that you all get, would set a standard in a subdivision that is over thirty years old, where taking away, you know, again, I understand he's not asking about the front, but that's been brought up, so let's address the fifty-foot. Every one of the houses in there is at fifty-foot for a reason. Makes it a very desirable subdivision down there. The same with the back and the side setbacks. Everybody else is at that there. I, I really don't see any reason at this point, and I've heard no reasons to this point of why any of these setbacks would be altered or variance would be given. But I just want to speak against it. The one question I do have for staff, and I know you might not be able to direct it at me now, maybe later, but what is the tree buffer and where is it on there?
So it, it's on the plat of the property, but beyond that, I could, I'm sure it'd have to be some reason.
Okay. So if the tree buffer has been cleared or disturbed at this point, would this board alter or ask for that to be restored?
We can review it once you know.
Okay. Because that would be a request that I have. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The only other I have is an email from Mr. Marvin Vickery, one seven four Belle Island Court, who's also against. I just wanted his entered into the record also. Okay. Now, I think at this time, Mr. Burke gets to make a rebuttal if he'd like to. Is that correct? Mr. Burke, if you have any, anything you can add?
I have a few things. So in regards to this variance being approved, causing a standard or starting a standard for the neighborhood, I would say that's absolutely false, because everyone would have to go through the same process that I'm going through. It's not like it would set a new standard for the county or the neighborhood, that you're automatically allowed to have a variance without a reason.
Well, I don't think he means it would be automatic. It means that anybody else who would want to do it would have to come through here, and then there would be precedence.
Yeah.
It'd be hard for us to say no to them if he said yes to you.
Correct, but if they did not have a reason to have a variance, then that would be denied.
But I think that's what he meant, that it shouldn't be automatic.
Right. So furthermore, I was not aware of a setback when I bought the property. Did not know the thirty-five foot or the fifteen-foot setback was in place when I purchased the property. Not really something I thought about when we first bought the house. I wasn't thinking that far in the future about having an accessory building. I did have a boat when we first moved in. It was a smaller boat, and I did have it in my garage, actually, when we first moved in. Since bought a little bigger boat, can't go in the garage, and it's taken up space in the driveway, which is the whole reason why we're trying to put a building up. Also, the tree buffer on the aft end of the property was not disturbed. There was one tree in the far-left corner that I took down, but as far as the twenty feet towards the Wilkerson's property, those trees were not cut down. It was the trees that you see, well, you can't see, but, so the south end of the property where that fifteen-foot buffer, or that fifteen-foot setback is, that's where I removed the trees on that side of the property.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, guys, I think we've heard it all. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to come out of public hearing?
Yes, yes, sorry. Yeah, motion to come out of public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, sorry about that. I'll entertain a motion on project two oh two three hundred eighty-four.
I make a motion that we deny the request?
I second.
Okay. Have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thanks, guys. All right. We'll move into the Planning and Zoning Commission portion of the meeting. I'll take a motion to open public hearing on project two oh two three zero zero two five Virginia Spell.
I make a motion to open hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Here you go.
Yeah, this is rezoning for property at twenty-three eighty-one Bill Fettero, on behalf of Ms. Virginia Spell, who is requesting to rezone approximately four acres of a twenty-one-acre tract from the A-five agriculture to the RR two-point-five rule residential. You can see the zoning map here. And the purpose is to just subdivide property. So there's two homes that exist on the property, and the parcel to be rezoned already has an existing home on it, so there's no future development, nothing associated with this, just a minor plat. Have some photos here, so you can see it's a pretty rural road, looking both directions. And staff recommends the approval of the rezoning with the condition that a minor plat be approved and recorded. Do I have any questions for me?
Okay. Any questions? All right. Ms. Spell, are you in the audience tonight?
Yes.
Do you have anything to add, or would you like to speak? You good?
He did a good job, eh?
All right. That works for me. Have anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak for or against? All right. Y'all making it easy.
Fantastic.
Yeah. Any questions from the board?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I entertain a motion on this issue.
Make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Okay.
I second.
All right. Motion in the second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to open public hearing on project two zero two three zero zero eight zero. Scott Allison with Coleman Company, representing Mr. Johnny Young.
Make a motion to, yes.
Sorry.
Oh, I make a motion to open public hearing.
Second. All right. All in favor? Okay.
I was going to go over the rezoning and conditional use together, if that's okay, since they're related. I thought it was, okay. So this is a rezoning proposed for two fifteen Fox Road. The lot is about six acres, and is currently zoned RR one, and they are requesting an A-five agricultural zoning, as, in order... um, as in order for, to meet the requirements of the associated conditional use. Um, the proposed rezoning is consistent, um, with the future land use of the area, which is shown as a low-density suburban character area. Adjacent properties include RR one, A-five, and R-fifteen zonings. Um, so this rezoning will continue to be a residential property, um, and remain compatible with those residential uses surrounding it. Um, additionally, this rezoning should not have any significant impact on public facilities, as there is an existing house there that they're not proposing any changes to. Overall, again, it is compatible, won't have a significant public impact, so staff is recommending approval for the A-five rezoning. In terms of the associated conditional use, this is for a home service kennel business for dogs, um, in an existing structure on the property. And so this is the site plan that the applicant provided, um, they do also have a large number of personal dogs, um, that will be kept on the right-hand side, um, and then the kennel use will be on the left-hand side of that accessory building, and they also live on the property. Um, in terms of the, the conditions for this use, um, they are proposing to board up to fourteen dogs inside, um, in this facility, as well as keep their personal dogs in it. Um, the kennel building and fences are shown on the site plan, um, and they plan to have drop-offs and pickups from seven AM to five PM by appointment only at scheduled times. Um, in terms of the specific conditions, there is a thirty-foot buffer requirement for kennel facilities. This is not met, you can see on the site plan, the existing building, um, along here, is only about twenty-two-point-five feet from the property. Um, however, this portion is being used for personal dogs, so it's not for the kennel use. Um, but there is space along the remainder of the property where the use is being done, um, to provide some additional planted buffer. Um, at this time, they are not proposing to provide those additional plantings, um, but instead are proposing to use a wood fence to shield the use. Um, the adjacent neighbor also uses the cleared area to access their property and indicated they'd prefer it not to be planted. Um, and they have also provided support, as have several other neighbors, uh, as included in your packet. Another requirement is that outdoor exercise areas have to be set back seventy-five feet from property lines, um, and have a two-hundred-foot setback from any residential dwellings. Um, this standard is not met, as the closest run is about sixty-eight feet from the property line and a hundred and thirteen feet from the adjacent use, residential use. And that's this home here. The remaining conditions, including the A-five zoning, should it be approved, um, are met. The use is compatible with the rural character of the area, um, and there is no additional development that would be proposed on the site. Um, again, there'll be a maximum of fourteen dogs inside, um, a few of the kennels do have doors that they can go in and out, but those can be locked, um, to keep the dogs inside. And the applicant plans to only have them out during scheduled exercise times, about three times a day, and then obviously if they need to use the bathroom or something, they'll take them out. Um, and he lives on the property, so should there be any issues, he can respond quickly. So staff is recommending approval, uh, with the following conditions. An additional planted buffer is provided to meet the requirements. The rear outdoor run is moved to meet the two-hundred-foot spacing requirement, which is just the fenced area. And I can answer any questions you have, we did receive a public comment, um, that we printed out and provided to you all via email.
Your staff recommendation calls for a planted buffering, but the neighbors are okay with the fence, is that?
It's a condition, so unfortunately, we have to recommend that it be met, yeah.
I got you, alright.
Any additional questions?
This email that you sent, that you provided for us, are they here?
I'm not sure. I don't believe so.
Okay.
I will, I will say I talked to that person, they could not be here, because I recommend they send the email.
Yes.
Okay.
Guess I have questions about the use of the kennel being up to fourteen dogs, but that this email states the owner already owns twenty.
Those are his personal dogs, so they are not considered, we can't control his owning personal dogs.
Gotcha.
Yeah. If there's an issue with animal control, that would be separate.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
So he could have thirty-four personal?
Animal control may limit the number, but that's not under.
There are as many persons as you want, you do.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Sarah.
Alright.
Good evening. Scott Allison with Coleman Company, representing Mr. Johnny Young. Thank you, Sarah, for the overview and with your help throughout this process. Um, Mr. Young is aware of the, the neighbor's concern over his personal dogs, he spoke to them, uh, was it yesterday or the day before yesterday, um, in order to try to quell some of the, the nighttime, um, you know, dogs to get going. Um, so, he's aware, they've had a lengthy discussion about it. Um, and, and I just wanted to point out that that, that's occurring presently without this, this kennel use. Those are his personal dogs, um, as you see on the site plan, um, the area to the, um, plan sheet right behind the building, um, there, that's, and inside the building is for personal use and personal dogs. What he's trying to do is, is that the, the property had the accessory building on it, there was a dog grooming type activity occurring at some point in the, at, at the, uh, home. He's not asking for that, um, you know, there's a, a, a home-based type service business that he's trying to, uh, create, uh, board dogs. Um, he obviously has experience in dealing and caring with four dogs and breeding them and also raising them. Um, and a lot of folks have asked whether or not he can help take care of their dogs while they can. You know, as far as the, I know we're talking on both issues, as far as the rezoning, um, obviously we have no objections, there's no specific conditions listed for our staff recommendation, um, and obviously the request to rezone to an A-five um, is compatible with, you know, the residential use on the property, as well as the home-based service business for the kennel. Um, specifically, talking through the, the use on the property, um, and as it relates to the conditional use, all that activity will occur on the, um, um, plan sheet left of your, um, exhibit here. Uh, you can see where we've tried to demarcate where that separation is, uh, there's no plans or, or anything to expand to the other side. So you have a couple of things going on there, um, because there's an existing building on the site that we're trying to utilize. You know, it's not like you can start from scratch and just move, move that building, uh, further away. In turn, as it relates to the specific conditions, um, you know, as mentioned, there's, in the zoning, there's not a significant public impact to try to rezone it to the A-five, and what, what Mr. Young's tried to do is communicate throughout this whole process with his adjacent neighbors. Uh, it's shown in the support letter, um, you know, with their concurrence, and it's specifically related to this use occurring on the, on the property. Um, you know, there's no smoke and mirrors that he's gonna show up and, you know, all of a sudden fourteen dogs from other people are gonna be there and in tow with the ones that he has and the cockers he has, or his, right? Um, but it's regarding the planted buffer and the other outdoor run, I, what did print out, and if it's okay, I can take some pictures and try to, uh, mark up this plan here. Just pass him that.
Thank you.
Alright, so, just wanted to show this as far as geometry goes, right? So, as you can see, if you'll go to the second sheet, um, when we were talking about the neighbor access, um, she does come down this gravel drive, and you can see the car parked at the neighbor, uh, the neighboring residence on the, the photo to your left, uh, what she does, she cuts between these trees, right? So, like Sarah mentioned, there's some difficulty in, yeah, planted buffer between the existing accessory building and that area, because that's how the neighbors access, and they, they definitely want to keep their access. They have some, some form of prescriptive rights to it, but, you know, it's not necessarily their driveway, that's just the way she goes down and accesses their property, right? Especially now that Mr. Young's made it, uh, more accommodating for her to get back there. Um, secondly, and as mentioned, uh, by Sarah, you know, that's the area that he actually accesses the rear of his property. You know, so what they've tried to do is, you know, there is a, a privacy fence put up. Again, that's an area that is adjacent to where the personal dogs are, not the kenneling dogs, so that, you know, you've got some separation there as well. Um, you know, I, I don't know how much room there really would be to plant, you can see where the six-foot fence extends beyond the actual use um, on the plan that I've, I've shown you. And you can see across the, um, about mid to three-quarters of the way down, the six-foot fence area, um, running perpendicular to it or the, the fences, the back fence of the chain link for the personal dogs, as well as what they're trying to establish to separate breeds as a larger dog area. So it'd be dependent on if those larger dogs are there, you know, to go back in that back area. The reason why I point that out is just to show you the separation, um, for his distance, and then really, nothing changes as far as if it was personal dogs, or if he didn't even have this use, having, you know, his own dogs in, in the back. So, you know, having a little bit of trouble figuring out where the additional planting can go, unless it extends beyond the actual location of the, of the use, as you see in some of the photos, uh, on your third sheet, um, just past the, um, side-by-side in the trailer, uh, it does drop off, and it gets a little wet back in there, I don't know if you can tell in the, in the image, but it's, it, there's a significant amount of standing water in the, in the rear. You know, and again, that's, that's how he accesses the back of his property. So, you know, what we are proposing is, um, you know, to utilize that fence, um, in order to, you know, dampen any thing that the buffer would have, would have provided, um, as well as we have, like I mentioned, the adjacent property owner's, um, concurrence with basically how it is now. It's the, the owner of the house that's closest. Speaking on the second condition, um, you know, I, what I've tried to show on this first sheet is if we were to move to be two-hundred feet from the, uh, closest adjacent residence, it puts us to starting the outdoor areas, um, out in the woods. You know, kind of in a disconnected location from the existing structure that's there. Yeah, it's pretty wet back in there as well, there's a, a drainage ditch that, uh, you know, feeds not just his property, but, but numerous properties back in that area. Um, and as you flip through the photos, you can see what I've tried to show in here is, is the, you know, the necessity for the connection. When you go onto your, I believe it's your fourth sheet, the small breed, uh, outdoor area, uh, you come out, you come out the main entrance to the establishment, and there's a gate in order to let the dogs in, if you need to go that regard, and if you look in the image, there's also a, a, a dog door to get back in there. Further on back in the next sheet, you can see where, um, these are, as you saw in your packet, there's four of the, the kennels are actually indoor/outdoor. Those dogs, I guess that's high, high-priced real estate in the kennel world, but that's for your, you know, your dog to be able to go, you know, kind of have a, a refuge outside or anything like that. Um, that's not an outdoor run, okay, that's for that specific, those four specific kennels, okay? But you can see in the rear of property that matches the plan sheet where the, the larger breed outdoor run is. And what I've tried to show on the, on the last sheet is if that was relocated, it goes out to this wet area, disconnected from the existing structure, um, and, you know, kind of in the woods, um, which causes a, a little bit of a logistics concern, um, with letting them out to the outdoor run. You know, obviously, what he doesn't want to have to, you know, add on to the accessory building, um, anything like that. So it does, it does push us off pretty far. Now, I do understand that there's a, uh, seventy-five foot requirement, um, from the property line for the outdoor run. We're sixty-eight feet in the middle, I know that's not mentioned in the conditions per se, but, um, you know, there is ability, obviously, to, because that's an interior fence, it's not connected to the building, um, well, it's connected to building, you know what I mean? It's not connected to the use and letting them in and out, I mean, that large breed outdoor run can be made smaller, but in that, and they can, it can be shifted over, you know, seven feet, in order to accommodate that con- condition. Uh, what we're, we're struggling with is, is trying to accommodate the two-hundred-foot, uh, condition and pushing that, that whole area and, and before it even begins, about forty to forty-five feet away from where they are now, and where that puts him on the property. Lastly, what I did want to point out is, I mean, uh, granted, the small, small breeds are kind of u- upfront in their little area. Um, I was over there yesterday, there's, you know, two of his personal puppy cocker spaniels in there, so, you know, that's the area catered to the smaller dogs, a little bit easier in and out, instead of going out the back and easier to manage, manage dogs, uh, per se. You know, again, pushing that off into the woods, uh, makes that a little bit more difficult, but it, it is up front, so, you know, just to point out. But one thing by having the larger breed, um, in the rear is to provide, you know, when you're driving down the road, you don't, you don't see it. Um, it's blocked by the structure, uh, from the adjacent property, it's blocked by the privacy fence, and really you don't know it's back there. You know, you can see this wooden fence up front for the small breeds, um, and, you know, the fear is, is that the, the effort that it would take to push these over, removing trees, um, creating, you know, getting it to drain, and creating these usable, as Mr. Young refers to airing yards, which I learned about throughout this process, um, in the waste management plan. They're called that for a number of reasons, and some of that has to do with the waste and everything else, but the, the, the point is, is that it's, you know, they've gotta, they gotta get it, you know, down with the rock and things like that, in order for easy cleanup. Uh, it, it creates another area on this property that's just been, you know, torn up, redone, and visible from the roadway. I can answer any other questions that you guys have, or, or that can wait till after anyone else wants to speak. Oh, um, no, I already mentioned that, but like I, like I said before, um, as far as the adjacent property owners, everybody was in concurrence. I know we have the one, the one email, but he has spoken to that gentleman, not, not saying the guy's in favor, but I'm just saying that there's good communication going on between neighbors.
And the letter's support from the neighbors, one of those neighbors is this closest person?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, guys? Okay, other than the email we've already discussed, I haven't, um, had any speaker slips, but is there anyone in the audience to speak for or against? Okay, alright, any further questions for anybody? Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I make a motion to close public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. And a motion on, uh, items two and three, two separate motions, please.
Before we make any motions, could we see the, the conditions, the staff conditions? And these conditions, just so I'm clear, this goes with the conditional use, not with the rezoning?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve or recommend approval of the rezoning.
I second the motion.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item two passes. And item three?
Um, I make a motion to, um, approve item three with staff recommendations.
With both staff recommendations?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Second.
In a second, any discussion?
Well, yeah, so if we, if we approve it with the, um, if we approve it with these recommendations, then that means that, as presented, that we're gonna have to move, that he's gonna have to move all those recommended areas. So they'll be detached. And he's gonna have to do the planted buffer and all that.
That'll affect the driveway the neighbor uses?
Right. So, I just don't think that's gonna work for what he wants to do.
I think it's gonna create worse conditions for the dogs, especially moving it all the way back there, isn't, he said it's, it's standing water back there, right?
Well, and my concern is, you, instead of having an enclosed area that's pretty much self-contained, it seems, you're now gonna have to take a dog out of a pen.
Several areas.
Take them over and put them back in, which, to me, is more, more possibility for a dog getting loose or hurt or something.
Good point.
So.
Okay. So your issue is with number two, the rear outdoor run, well, it's with both, with both additional planted buffering?
Yeah, 'cause with the planted buffer, then that's gonna cut the neighbor off from their access.
They're at a hundred and thirteen feet right now, right?
Uh.
I mean, seventy-five feet really wouldn't make a, like, a big difference.
Yeah, I think that's right, yeah.
I don't I wouldn't find a difference between 75 feet and having them move the entire facility, especially the conditions that's going to create for the dogs, honestly.
Okay, so let's talk about this. So we can, so I made the motion to approve it with the staff recommendation. But having heard what Joe says, I think definitely some more conversation needs to happen here. However, what would we recommend?
Well, I think we could, I mean, I, we could go with your motion. We could vote on your motion. We could recommend approval without the staff recommendations or we could deny it altogether.
Right.
But in any rate, the the commissioners will have the ultimate say on both of these issues. So I guess we're really making a recommendation to them for what we see as the best case.
Our motion didn't get a second, so you can withdraw it. We don't have to vote on it.
Stacy, Stacy, did you second them?
I was going to second, then the condition of speaking came to.
Oh, okay.
Can we can we make a motion with just staff recommendation number one without the insertion of staff recommendation?
Well, how about, let me just rescind my motion. Let's do that first.
All right, so back to square one.
Back to square one.
Do you have a different motion that you would like to?
Um, no, I'm going to let you take the take the lead on that, Joe.
Well, particularly because this is a, you know, ultimately decided by the commissioners. I'm most, I would make the motion that that we would approve the conditional use without the conditions recommended by staff.
So no conditions?
Right.
Okay.
We're not deciding anything. We're just recommending.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Anybody second that? Second. Can we go second?
Well, I have a second.
Sure, I have a second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Joe saves the day.
Is it true?
That makes sense.
Is it true there's no limit on personal dogs in Byron County? You can have as many as you want?
That's animal control.
Yeah. So in Pembroke?
There are also hunting dogs and so there's.
Yeah. In Pembroke, you can have seven. I always thought it should be a weight limit. I think you should have 200-pound of dog, whether that's two lambs or.
For a breeding, I saw they'd have one dog.
Concur.
Exactly.
Anyway, this is my. All right, I'll entertain a motion to open public hearing on conditional use with variance Project 20230088 Byron Lewis Roosters Bar Inn.
I make a motion to open public hearing.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, so this is a conditional use with a variance. I want to start before I really get into the details of the item and just a little bit of an explanation for why you're seeing the conditional use with the variance. So ordinarily, we know that this board serves as both our Board of Adjustment that usually makes the final decision on variances as well as serving as the board as our Planning and Zoning Commission who makes recommendations on conditional use applications. So typically, we would have seen this variance occur under the Board of Adjustment items where you would make a final decision and then we would come to a conditional use where you would just be making a recommendation to forward to the Board of Commissioners. However, with this particular request, the conditional use itself is the addition of the accessory pole barn. And that accessory pole barn on this item is located within a setback requiring a variance. So the variance is such a fundamental part of the conditional use itself that we did not see any kind of benefit in trying to separate the decision-making amongst two different boards. So that's why we've decided to run these concurrently, which which we can do. And so we're running these this variance concurrent with the conditional use. So this evening, we're asking you to consider both, but only make a recommendation on this and it will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners. And so I just want to make sure that that is is understood or if you have any questions about why we're doing that a little bit different this evening. Okay? All right. Now, to get into the the request itself, so the applicant is Byron Lewis. He is the owner of Roosters Barn, which is located on Highway 280. Some of you might know this establishment. It was, I think, recently bought by Mr. Lewis last year. Prior to that, it was the Blue Diamond Lounge. So this is an existing tavern located on Highway 280. And again, the application request itself is for the conditional use along with the variance for the addition of a 40 by 60 or a 2,400-square-foot pole barn to be located on site. Now, the variance request is specifically to reduce the required front setback for that accessory pole barn from 75 feet to 40 feet. All right, now this zoning map shows the existing zoning of the parcel as well as the adjacent properties. So this parcel consisting of one acre is zoned B1, which is our neighborhood commercial zoning district. And you can see from the map here that it is surrounded by predominantly rural residential zoning. That lighter shade of green that you see in close proximity is our RR1, a rural residential zoning district. Now, this site was originally rezoned under a rezoning application and conditional use by the Board of Commissioners in December of 2008. And it was rezoned with the specific purpose of being able to subdivide out this one-acre portion in order to make what was already an existing tavern compatible with its zoning. Prior to that zoning action in 2008, it was a non-conforming use because it was a tavern operating in a residential zoning district. And we know from the meeting minutes from 2008 from the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the Board of Commissioners that the intent in just rezoning one acre for the existing tavern was really just to bring it into conformance. And there were some notes and comments made in those meetings about not wanting to set a precedent, not wanting to see uses extended on this site, but really just to bring it into conformance because at the time, the property owner was wanting to be able to subdivide it out and sell. So that's kind of the history of the zoning and how it became a B1 in the first place. Now, this survey shows the existing conditions of the site. We had the property owner update the survey because we really didn't have any good information about the one acre that was previously rezoned and how it related to the other portions of the property that he owned. So you can see from the survey here, what we have is the boundary for that B1 zoning district. And this represents that one acre that was rezoned by the Board of Commissioners in 2008. We know that we have the existing tavern used here. That building was constructed, I believe, in the 1960s. And then associated with the tavern use, there is an accessory outbuilding back here and then as well as some parking that we would see along Highway 280 and a grassy area here that's sometimes used for overflow parking. Now, the property owner also owns the parcel that we now see behind this where there is an existing residence as well as some additional accessory structures. I do have some pictures here to also help give some clarity as to the site. So this is across Highway 280 looking at the existing tavern. So this is the facility here and you can see its location and proximity to Highway 280. Now, backing up and taking a view of that a little further out, again, we can see the existing tavern. We can see that accessory building behind it. And then here next to that tavern is kind of that open grassy area where we sometimes see overflow parking. Giving it another angle, and this is from the opposite side, looking in the other direction. Again, you can see the tavern and you can also see that open field next to it. And then yet just one more angle, this is the edge of that existing tavern, open field where we would see some overflow parking. And then this house behind is what was on that remaining tract that the same property owner owns. Now, looking at the specific proposed plan for this. So to start, we're looking at the the use of what this accessory pole barn would be used for, and we're also looking at the location of it. So what the property owner is planning is to install that 40 by 60 pole barn immediately adjacent to the existing tavern. So we did scale this out based off of the 40 by 60 that he represented. And his desire is to put it in line with the existing building and the the roof line of that front porch on the existing building. So after doing that, this is where we start to see that it does encroach into a required setback. And we've measured it out to be about 40 feet from the Highway 280 right-of-way. Now, the purpose of this accessory pole barn, we did ask the applicant what he intended to use it for. Now, what we know from what he's represented is that he's really looking at a range of uses for this, but mostly it seems to be a gathering spot. So specifically, he identified having a location to host cornhole leagues, fundraisers, poker runs, use this open accessory pole barn for motorcycle parking in the event of inclement weather. He has also identified the potential to maybe bring in a food truck and have it have a place to park and also listed in his application materials that it could also serve as a designated smoking area. So definitely, the intent of it is to allow for some type of outdoor covered gathering space with a multitude of activities that could be occurring if permitted. Now, in the staff's reports, in reviewing the potential uses, really, staff's only concern with this is the, you know, the gathering and the activities that could be brought outdoors. So we know the site is small. We know whenever it was rezoned in 2008, it was rezoned at only an acre because they were really trying to limit the use for the purposes of just being to subdivide at that time. And we know that the property is still surrounded by predominantly residential zoning. And so once we start introducing a structure that's, you know, nearly the same size, if not larger than the existing structure, then we're looking at increasing the impact of the use itself on this site. And if that generates additional noise, that could become a problem. Our other concern with it is we saw from the pictures that the site is small. There is some gravel parking at the front of the tavern, but we've seen that the grassy area off to the side has really been used for overflow parking. So the other concern that we have with introducing this use specifically with the size and location that it's being presented in is what kind of impact would that have in the circulation of traffic on site? The area next to the building exists existing where this would be located, we can see has been a gravel area in the past. We think that it's maybe been used to to access, you know, other portions of the site for parking and maneuverability. And so our concern is if we put this open pole barn up and that then obstructs the flow of traffic, then what kind of impact could that have on parking, particularly if they're having busy nights and bringing additional people in for events? So for the use, I mean, that's a concern that staff has, introducing noise and also introducing obstructions that could maybe make difficulties in parking. And then with the location itself, we have to evaluate it under the variance standards. So we have to identify the hardship on the property if not allowed to to reduce that front setback. And in staff's review of that, you know, we do know that there may be some hardships of the site, particularly because it is a lot of a small size. We know that the existing building is already encroaching. It was constructed in 1960, predating the ordinance requirements. But really, whenever we're looking at this, we're focused more on the size of the structure and whether or not there are any other places that could be cited that would have less of an impact on that Highway 280 setback. And it's it's a substantial structure, again, larger than the existing building itself. So we do think that there are opportunities where the applicant could try to either reduce the size of the structure. And since it is a standalone structure and isn't attached to the existing tavern or proposed to be attached, there are still some opportunities where it could be placed, you know, in another location on the site, meeting setbacks. So staff really didn't find a hardship in order to support the the variance portion to allow it to be located where it's being proposed. So with that and for those reasons, staff is recommending denial of the conditional use along with the requested variance. And I'm available for any questions.
How big is the building?
The existing, the existing building, based on the tax assessor records, is 1,846 square feet. If we factor in the porch along with it, then it's a total of 2,201 square feet.
Could you define tavern?
Bar. It's a drinking establishment.
You don't know what a tavern is?
Is it a restaurant, though? I mean, are they serving food? Is it just?
No, so at this time, he does not have a commercial kitchen that where he's serving food. So it is just operating as a tavern use at this time. He has talked about plans to expand his services and, you know, put in a commercial kitchen to provide food. But I think that's the purpose of, you know, one of his proposed uses to provide a place for food trucks to come in. I think he is looking for a way to get food onto the site.
Again, who lives in the house, Jason, on the same lot?
So my understanding, and I don't know, so I would like to defer that to the applicant, but my understanding based off of prior conversations is that he owns it, but it may have been rented out to a tenant.
May have been, so it's no longer rented right now because I can find that the that would encourage severely, I mean, toward their parking area and toward toward their living conditions, honestly, at that point.
Yeah, I do not know if as of today it's rented.
The applicant is here?
I do not see the applicant.
I would love to know what happens with parking. Where's parking going?
There's nothing there to begin with in front, just a little bit.
Does the county have parking requirements based on the use, the current use? And then also, if the structure was constructed, does that change the parking requirements?
So the specific parking requirements related to a tavern, this particular location would be grandfathered and potentially non-conforming to the current parking requirements. And that's because of the age of the structure and how long the establishment has been there. Now, the addition of the accessory pole barn alone, I don't think would generate an additional parking demand.
So does that mean, I'm not trying to get nitpicky, but does that mean it's a non-conforming use as it stands?
The use itself is not non-conforming. The use as a tavern in the B1 zoning district is permitted by conditional use, which was the purpose of them obtaining that rezoning in 2008 in order to bring it into compliance. Now, the addition of additional structures are not permitted by rights and therefore requires it to come to this board under a conditional use as well.
If he were to build that building today, it would have to have a pay parking lot.
Absolutely, yeah.
And it would have to have X number of spaces based on.
Based off the size, that is correct, yes.
Based on enclosed square foot. Like, we would figure his parking based on the size of the building, not the size of the.
That's correct, based off of the size of the building.
So it's not a non-conforming use, but it's a non-conforming structure?
That's correct, yes.
As a non-conforming structure, does our ordinance allow expansion or extension?
So non-conforming structures do have limitations on how they can be expanded. What's unique about this is they're not requesting to expand the structure because the accessory pole barn is a standalone structure. But they are requesting it to be in the setbacks, which is why we need the variance or which is why they would need a variance.
Very clever.
So being as it's a standalone, there's no rule that the primary structure has to be the biggest structure on the building? I mean, don't we have rules that the garage or the guesthouse, whatever, has to be smaller than a house?
Uh, yeah, so we do. And we think about that generally in terms of, you know, residential context and and how it relates to residences. For commercial uses, I think it's a little bit different because commercial uses can have multiple, you know, uses and structures that usually aren't viewed the same as residences with their detached garages. But that's a great point that you brought up, Alex. Yeah, and this definitely exceeds the size of the tavern structure.
The way that looking at it from a different point of view is that from Pembroke all the way to Highway 80, there is no place for socialization. And all the people that would socialize this type of place now congregates over by the bar, over by, you know, not the bar, but the liquor store. And that creates additional additional problem there, but I mean, can't everybody know about it? So they just let it pass through, you know? So now, if there was some place for these, you know, people to go, to do something that's different besides just congregate in that little area there, then that would be. then that would be more of a, a community activity, because I think somewhere in there, you know, he did say other things that was available there. And actually, on this end of the county, we need something like that. Versus, uh, you guys, um, the people that live in Richmond Hill, they have, you know, all kind of little, uh, bar, and, uh, little bars, tavern, uh, field, big soccer fields and things like that, you know? On this end of the county, it's nothing. And I'm at far as, I'm at the noise level, is that, uh, I live, um, right across in the subdivision from Hickory Hill, okay? And I don't hear it in, uh, noise at night, so I mean, especially when it with the Blue Diamond and the others, and I've been living there since two thousand five. You know, it's a nice place, and I think that's, it's something to do. And for the people that's in the development and other places around, it could be walking distance, you say more people off the, uh, highway, you know? Uh, either they go right out there on their little, uh, four-wheeler or whatever, you know? So I think that, uh, it is something that's definitely needed on this end of the area. And, uh, if we restart restricting that, uh, to a point, then, uh, for future growth, which is gonna, which is growing, and there's no place for the future people to, uh, come right this minute, you know? So, that's my state of mind, you know?
Okay. Any questions for staff?
No, sir.
Okay. Anyone left in the audience to speak for or against this project? Nothing? All right. Uh, then I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
I make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Saying all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Take a motion on project two oh two three hundred eighty-eight. With any or all conditions.
Okay.
Considered.
I make a motion, uh, for the approval, uh, for conditional use and also the variance.
Okay. All right. Don't leave him hanging, second? All right, motion dies for lack of a second. Let's hear another motion.
I make a motion to, um, deny both the variance and the conditional use, because the criteria are not met.
All right.
Second.
And a second? All right, all in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Is that a?
That was.
That was a head scratch or a?
No, I, I approved.
You approved, okay, all right, I was just checking.
No, I approved the denial correctly.
Okay.
My hand was up.
All right.
Yeah, I need to wear orange.
Okay, other business?
No other business, but I do just wanna take the opportunity to introduce, um, Kevin Boz, um, to our Planning and Zoning Commission.
I was the only one at the other court, huh?
Oh, he was a, he was appointed by our Board of Commissioners and to replace Boyce Young. Uh, so first meeting, and we're happy to have you.
Welcome.
I missed Boyce's retirement party.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We read it back.
Yeah.
Um, are we going to reschedule the, um, time with our attorney?
Yes, so we are hoping to reschedule. I know that we were trying to get that scheduled for, um, this evening at six o'clock. There was a scheduling conflict. Um, we are hoping to look ahead to the May meeting, um, and hopefully do the same thing, just start at six o'clock, um, and have them come in at that point in time, but I will confirm that with everybody. Um, hopefully, we'll, we'll get that confirmed, um, here shortly, and, and I can make sure that we're all scheduled for it.
So not for April?
Not for April, we're looking at May.
All right. Okay, guys, anything else?
No, sir.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All, okay.